Good evening. It is Monday, October 29th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be recorded live. We are in Room 146 at Winterford High School. Ms. Haynes, you please call the roll.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Mr. Vecchia?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here. Mrs. Swope, you please lead us on the fudge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any public comment this evening? Mr. Gary Riley?
Yes. Chairman Capabianco and school committee members, thank you so much for entertaining the public section and comment section of the meeting. And I'm here basically to entertain some comments in support of Chairman Capabianco's endorsement or request that the school committee endorse question three. Now, I found that actually the school committee really doesn't have to do that. But I think in light of the atmosphere that we live in, many times I find that people who have no exposure to people who are different than themselves or any knowledge of them become fearful and anxious. And out of that, sometimes we can develop intolerance and even hate, which I'm a little too close to this weekend, having been a resident of Pittsburgh for 23 years and seeing what transpired over the weekend. However, what I wanted to say is that I certainly endorse this, you know, acceptance of the question three, but I also have personal experience with a coworker of mine named Roberta, who dealt with the gender identity issue in midlife, which was really tough for her because she had, she was married, she had teenage children. It was difficult for her family, for her friends, and sometimes in work situations. And I was there as kind of a listening ear a lot of times and got to know and really became very fond of Roberta. Roberta is dead now, but I'm kind of here because of that personal experience of being touched by somebody who was transgender. And with that said, I would support the school committee's endorsement. I guess there's a whole lot of other organizations that, and committees as far as the state governor and our speaker who also endorse this question three. And thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Riley, thank you for your comment and thank you for your service in the town. And I know you served as chairman of this committee in the past, so thank you for attending.
A while ago.
Any further public comment? No more further public comment? Any delegates and visitors this evening?
This evening? Yep, the principals are going to do their MCAS presentation. And so we have all of our principals here, as well as our executive director of curriculum, instruction, and accountability, Ms. Laurie Galvin. So Laurie will begin the process and then we're going to also hear from Principal Grimes, Principal Curly, Principal Crombie, and Principal Pearson to give us an overview. I think it's important to note, we did have some time with the school committee in a working session to review the accountability, the new accountability reporting system. So the school committee is well-versed on the system. We're all well-versed as well as we are because we're all still learning the system itself and the changes in the system. And I'm going to let Laurie, Ms. Galvin, go through a portion of the presentation, which will give you a little bit of an overview of that, and then we'll let the principals jump into some findings that they wanted to share with you.
Great, thank you very much. Hi, everyone. So Superintendent Hoursen, I'm going to kind of move through this a little bit quicker. We did meet with a couple of the meeting members to get into depth, but, you know, open any time for additional conversation where if there was some confusion and looking at the slides and all, happy to follow up on. What they're looking at now, this new accountability system, and I want to preface it by saying that the base format for this presentation is being used by more than 55 superintendents and assistant superintendents in the greater Boston and North Shore area because it's really, you know, it really felt that everyone had to deliver the same message in this new system of accountability. So a lot of them worked on it together and then everybody took it and tweaked it to make it, you know, fit their own districts. So the new accountability system has new system highlights and accountability indicators. There are criteria and reference components that we're going to go through. We're just going to take you through this step-by-step process. The school committee already has copies of this, so they've seen it. The highlights, I apologize, it is a little bit small when you put it up here, but the biggest piece is that this new next generation test, they're able to now put grades three through eight together. So they have a system of accountability that is comparable now. So they all took this new legacy test this year. Why? When the high school still remains with, I'm sorry, the high school took the legacy test from MCAS in the past, where three through eight all did the new 2.0 version of MCAS, next generation MCAS. The difference is down here, and I'll show you a slide that's larger afterwards, but it shows you that the categories now are meeting target, partially meeting target, and schools requiring assistance. So for the Cummings and Winterford Middle School on this new test, these are the four accountability indicators. Achievement, which incorporates English, Language, Arts, and Mathematics, scaled score, the average scaled score of the two of them combined, along with science achievement. But that piece of the science was based on the CPI, the composite performance index that you used to hear a lot about. That doesn't exist anymore, but because science only happens in fifth and eighth grade, they're not, they have nothing to compare it to. So the student growth is the, again, the mean of ELA and math student growth percentages. English language proficiency, so any students, it's the progress in obtaining English proficiency for our EL students that are not in their first or second year in the country. So any students that have been in the district for beyond two years. And then the additional indicator that's new this year is chronic absenteeism. And while each school has an individual chronic absenteeism rating for their own purposes, grades one through eight, so Fort Banks is incorporated into the accountability system now, even though the students are tested, but via the chronic absenteeism. If any student is absent for 18 days or more, it's a knock against your accountability. So it's tough, that's a tough kind of road for us to carry because, you know, parents make the decisions, but that's one of the things why it's really important, how important it is for kids to come to school, not just for their, you know, the education, but this is all weighing into how the state is looking at us in Winterford is making progress. So the difference at the high school is they have the same four with achievements, student growth, English language proficiency, and in their additional indicators, they have chronic absenteeism, but they also have the percentage of 11th and 12th graders completing advanced coursework. They're almost like bonus points this year. So the more courses that you offer, enduring enrollment, AP, that kind of thing, you gain additional accountability points. And the other part for them is the graduation rate, the four-year cohort graduation rate and the annual dropout rate. Those also factor into the high school's accountability going forward. So this piece is, like it says, it's new in the fact that the nonlinear path to achieving language proficiency is six years. So much like when we originally, when MCAS came out originally and the state gave you a target area that says, okay, this is where you are now, by 2017, this is where we expect you to go each year, that's a little bit of joy basically for our ELL students. They're setting a six-year plan for their English proficiency. So as your ELL students are making progress, they'll be weighted against targets set for that growth model. And this is how the weights come in. So this is us in this category because we do have ELL students that factor in, whereas some school districts do not. So 60% at the Cummings and the Winterford Middle School, 60% is based on achievement, how their kids did in the ELA, math, and science scores. 20% is based on student growth mean and English language proficiency, 10%, and the chronic absenteeism, 10%. At the high school, at the high school, only 40% are based on achievement. This is because they believe that the high school completion four-year cohort rate and annual dropout rate make up that other, that other 60% basically. It's, I mean, I think they're, they're basically were saying that if your kids are graduating and they're making progress, then that also goes towards achievement. They're combining those two because they want them to be within three percentage sections, basically. So that was their reason behind that. And then 10% on the absenteeism and 10% on ELL. Each school is given a 1 through 99 calculation using the indicators I just pointed out to you. They have not just one for the school, but in each individual category of all students, high need students, and then even more on the breakdown of ELL students, students with disabilities, and so on. So again, this is the assessment that was given. Non-high schools sort of public exams, Winterford Middle School serving three through eight in the new next generation, and high schools did the legacy end test. The criteria and reference component, this is the piece that is new to accountability this year, and the piece is really about closing that achievement gap. And what they're saying basically is, you know, you can close the achievement gap if your students at the top are not doing as well. Obviously, that's not the goal. So the gap closing has to occur from the ground up. So not only now are you being given targets for your all students, your aggregate student numbers, you're also being given a target for your lowest 20% performing students. So they have identified those. They will identify a new, a new group of these students probably in late November once all the SIMS data has been certified across the state. And everyone is going to be expected to meet their targets, both for all students and for that lowest 20%. This is pretty much the same thing I just said, using the SIMS data. The high school, they can't use that cohort model because of the legacy test, so they will continue to be using the average scaled score going forward until they switch over to the new test. So the targets for achievement indicators are based on the assessment performance of schools that demonstrate improvement in the past. That's how they set up this year because they have nothing to compare it to. So they took the highest 25% of performing students from last year, figured out how much they were growing on average, and they took that number and they added it to the scaled score of every kid, basically. So ours, I think we were putting quartile two by the state and 1.7 percentage points was added on to each school, and that was what was going to set the targets for this year. So this is what winter targets were this year. So grade three through eight for all students, we are expected to go up 1.5 in the ELA, 1.5 in the math, and 2.7 percentage points in science. That was for all students. And if you look at the lowest performing, because the gap was so much larger, we are expected to go up 5.5 in the ELA and 3 percentage points in math for all of our, for that category of lowest performing students. At the high school, the numbers are a little bit different. 1.5 for ELA, 1.9 for math, 1.8 for science, and then 2.1 for the lowest performing, 4.2 in math, and 4.1 in science. So these targets for lowest performing 20% were very high. They were really high. That was something that across the state, everybody is, you know, paying close attention to because it's the first time we've ever heard of anything like this. So this is what the points are now based on. If you exceeded the target, you got four points. If you met the target, you got three. If you improved but not, improved but low or below the target, you got two points. If you didn't change at all, you got one point. And if you declined, you got zero points. And they did this for every one of those indicators, for every subject. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that. Winterford overall was found to be partially meeting target, 65% of students partially meeting targets and meeting the requirements set for this year. The districts themselves will not get an accountability percentage. The schools will, but the district itself will not. They'll only get a percentage of partially meeting, being, being improved, basically, which will shift to next year. So... So for Winterford, this shows you this graph, I know I apologize if it's a little difficult for you to see in the audience, but it shows the scores by grade level and it shows how many students are meeting or exceeding expectations within the district. After tonight, we'll post this to our website too, so if anybody at home that wants to see the presentation, you'll be able to go on, look closer at some of the details. And again, the principals will speak to this in their presentations. And... But as we go through the process, each principal will speak to you a little bit more about it, but I'm going to let them talk about their schools and their rules and everything. And again, I urge you, if you have any questions when you're looking through the packets, it's very cumbersome. The biggest thing that the state is reminding us is try not to compare anything to last year because they have nothing to do with, the scores this year have nothing to do with anything that you've seen in the past. So as the principals go through and questions come up, feel free to reach out to any of us afterwards.
If anybody has any questions, I'll turn it over to Ms. Pearson.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Hey, everybody, it's always nice to see you and being able to explain what we're doing over at Fort Banks School. This isn't going to give you a full census to what we're doing, but it's going to tell you a little bit about how we plan on addressing some of the information that we're aware of from MCAS. I had the good fortune of being able to meet with Mrs. Grimes and the assistant principal, as well as Ms. Luttermann. They helped me understand a little bit, because there's a lot of detail that goes on when you're looking at the MCAS data. And so what we were able to find out is that the third grade students scored deficient by the state standard in only two of the standards in math, measurement, data, and operations and algebraic thinking. Without reading this for you, you'll be able to see on the left-hand side that these are these, oh, man, you're not supposed to touch those. We don't have these things. I don't know why I can make these mistakes and answer questions about how that works. So these are the standards themselves. For those of you that don't know, the standards are kind of like the big umbrella, and underneath the standards come these little sub-skills that make up the bigger picture of what measurement and data is intended to look like in a higher grade level. What you're going to be able to see here on the area that I won't touch, but I tried to over here, these are within measurement and data and operations and algebraic thinking, the little sub-skills that our students are not doing that well with. This is very different than what you're going to see in ELA, because what I can tell you about here is that the majority of our students have not had any exposure to the majority of these skills. Multiplication is something we don't touch upon. Fractions is something we don't touch upon. There are a variety of skills within here that we don't look at because they're not included in the standards. And so what we try and do, and the call to action for us, is to expose students to skills, make sure that they master skills, and then work on the integration piece when they get over to third grade. The difference between math and ELA is exactly that summary. The math piece, we simply are not instructed to teach these kinds of skills. Nevertheless, we obviously have to be able to deal with it. So in speaking with Ms. Murphy and Mrs. Grimes and Ms. Luttermann, they helped me figure out some other things that we would be able to do to address the needs that we have as far as these considerations are concerned. And so what we want to be able to do is after we find out what our weaknesses are, we find out what we need to consider, and that is exactly what I had said to you, is that a lot of the skills are not introduced within these standards. A lot of these are within clusters, which makes them harder to tease out. And a lot of the skills that we're teaching students frankly, do not have the same level of importance. There are some skills that we touch on that they're isolated skills. They're not really important for furthering additional learning, and we can all think of examples along those lines. So that sometimes happens. So it's going through and figuring out what skills are worth really focusing on. The two ways that we're going to be dealing with them this year are, the first one is we're going to hyper-focus on some of the fluencies. We can't do more than that. We can increase students' fluencies in terms of their understanding and their ability to generate simple facts that make up that bigger skill. Knowing your addition facts is a really important prerequisite for getting fluent in multiplication. And so we will work on enhancing the fluency. The bigger issue for us in math, where we're going to be focusing this year, is on iReady. I think I spoke to the committee about iReady last year. iReady is an instructional program that we'll be using this year that is not only going to target the individual and discrete differences that our students need to focus on within their own learning profile. It's also going to be able to give us real-time assessment information. As of today, we have already completed the diagnostic portion of iReady. We have professional development on Wednesday that's going to be teaching us how to use that data and then cluster and instruct our kids. So that's what's going on in math. I think it's going to make best sense to stop here in case anybody had questions on that.
Okay, yeah. So, given what you're doing, would you expect to see an improvement in these scores next year in third grade?
In math, in this particular content as well, I can't take responsibility for that improvement. And it's not because I don't want to. It's for the reason that I've already explained. The skills that the students are being tested on are introduced in third grade. The foundation skills is all I can assume responsibility for. So going back to the example that I gave you, we don't introduce multiplication. I can't tell you what changes and practices a Cummings school is going to be doing in order to either target that curriculum need sooner, different approaches to getting students to master it. I can't speak to that. I can tell you, we're definitely going to target the sub-skills that we hope will put them in better place to get the learning up and running.
Thank you.
All right. ELA is great. And by the way, in case you haven't been following us, ELA seems to be the strong suit in Winterford, at least at the elementary school. And so we are thrilled that the only area, the only standard where we were even mildly deficient was in reading. And that's not really surprising. When you think about some of the areas, you know what reading entails. Reading talks about the integration of skills. It talks about conceptual thinking. The discrete skills on that, we're okay with. That's not where the issue is because we're talking about reading. Fluency, it's done. All of those other little components that are part of fluency, sound letter association, decoding, blending, all of those kinds of things have already been done. So the fluency piece is good for us. It's the reading piece which focuses on comprehension that we're having a little bit of a hard time with. And so when you take a look at the right-hand side and you can see the considerations, you can see where the biggest, where the biggest challenge is. It's the last quarter, the number of areas that are required in sub-skill integration. And so what we plan on doing for that is essentially revising our approach to instruction. The problem with young learners in reading is that there are so many foundation skills that have to be mastered, and the thinking levels of students is very dependent on the developmental spectrum that they are in. It is difficult for young students that have limited developmental capacity within their brain to hold on to information. Holding on to information is the skill you need to have in order to do things like compare and contrast. You have to be able to have the capacity to hold the information, decipher the information, compare the information, and then integrate the information. You can't teach those skills. You can practice those skills. So what we plan on doing is revising our approach to instruction to reflect enhanced focus on modeling the integration. I've already spoken with the second grade teachers and I've explained to them exactly what that looks like. They do a whole group lesson modeling their thinking without necessarily the expectation that all students can do that. You have to show them how to do that first. We will change that. The last third of the year, our RTI rotations, which are small group learning opportunities, will also include the integration of skills. Again, we will take the modeling that's going on in the classroom and in small group, we will give students an opportunity to integrate the skills. And that's the approach that we have this year to addressing the needs of the third grade students and getting them in a better ready position for third grade success. Questions? Idea?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up to speak will be Ms. Nora Grimes from the Arthur T. Cummings School.
You're welcome.
Don't touch the screen.
Don't touch the screen.
Thank you for having us. What I will say first is to give kudos to Mr. Harity, Dr. Murphy, and all the hard-working teachers at the ATC, the Arthur T. Cummings School, because their MCAS scores were excellent. So I have the pleasure of being able to be the bearer of that wonderful news. So when we look at our criterion reference component calculations, you can see for the total possible point that you could get, the ATC got four out of four, four out of four, three out of four, 11 out of 12. I mean, excellent for the criterion reference component calculations. In short, 90% of the students were meeting their targets. And if you look over here, the lowest performing students, 95% of them were meeting their targets. So that's something that is truly excellent. So when you're looking at the... Who's the arrow? Thank you, where is it? So when you are looking at the results for the Arthur T. Cummings School compared to the state, what you want to look for is the top two categories, exceeding expectations and meeting expectations. So when you look at those top two categories, the ATC for their top two categories for grade three reading, they were at 63%. So when you look at the state in the top two categories, the state was at 52%. That's almost, that's a little over a 10% differential. That is statistically significant. So they, when we look at the ATC compared to the state, you want to focus on these towns here, which says meeting or exceeding the expectations. So you could just kind of go down and get a good general overview. Grade three math, 51 to 50. And like Mrs. Pearson said, we did see that the difference there was not as significant as the other areas. So we did meet and we were talking about that mathematics and the, you know, younger grades, the lower elementary grades in terms of their transition into the upper elementary grades. But if you look at grade four math, they're, the ATC is 62%, the state is 48%. That's a nice statistically significant difference. Grade five, English, Language, Arts, excellent. Their top two categories, 72%, the state 54%. That's quite a difference. So when we look at the areas of strength, what Dr. Murphy and Mrs. Luttermann and Mrs. McGonigal and I did, we just went through the standards-based report... we just went through the standards-based reports. So the MCAS will give you a report based on the questions and the standards that the questions address. So when you look at those, you can just see that questions that were doing much better than the state for math, I don't have to read those out, geometry, key ideas in ELA, vocabulary acquisition. And then for areas of focus, those were the areas where we did slightly lower than the state. There really weren't that many areas where it was a significant difference. So for math, it was just fractions, word problems. They're always the toughest on the MCAS and they, you know, year after year after year, they'll show that we need to focus on getting better at those word problems. Factors and multipliers in grade four, numerical expressions in grade five, et cetera. So how are we going to address those results? So for our, the areas that we're not doing quite as well as the state in English language arts, we do have some student learning goals focused on improving written responses. So we did find that under constructed responses, which is where there's no multiple choice, the student has to come up with a response all on their own, that they fell a little short. So we're going to focus some student learning goals on improving written responses. We follow a monthly standards-based scope and sequence, and we use that data from monthly assessments to inform our instruction. So we can kind of always keep ahead of those areas that we are showing weakness from month to month to month, and then we can address them. We have monthly instructional leadership teams and we have, we can come and plan anytime, and that's devoted to data-driven instructions. So we're always looking at the data, always trying to improve and have it drive our instruction. For the math action goals, we have a math coach and she is very good at sharing best research practices with teachers, providing high-quality resources that can enhance the learning. So those teachers have that resource, which really helps them focus their teaching as well on those data-driven decisions. And then for our science action goals, we're going to continue to implement the STEM scopes curriculum. We just purchased Generation Genius that augments the STEM scopes curriculum. We're going to integrate the new technology standards into a scope and sequence and our lesson plans. And again, we use common planning time to help teachers and teacher collaboration on integrating these practices into our existing curriculum and lessons. Any questions?
Thank you so much. These presentations are great from you, I love them. You mentioned that Mr. Harity and the teachers have done such a great job last year and you're continuing to benefit from what they've done and improving on whatever's going on. What do you think accounts for the jump in our scores in this grade level? And what would you consider to be what you're going to continue to do to continue to improve that?
Well, I think the jump really is a direct result of sticking to a standards-based curriculum and scope and sequence. So when the new state standards were coming out, there was a curriculum boot camp. Mrs. Pearson and the teachers in the younger grades, they had to make a big shift. So where their lesson plans, their curriculum, it was all on those new standards. So rather than having, say, the Storytown scope and sequence be the direction that you headed in that year, it would be the standards, the standards. You've got to get this standard, you have to make sure you hit this standard. I mean, there are a couple of questions that were on a standard that wasn't covered in Storytown at the time that MCAS began. So it was later. So that whole standards-driven curriculum and standards-driven instruction and lesson planning, I think that's what made the difference. And it was in grades K all the way up, you know, through grade eight. What do you think, Dr. Murphy? Anything else you want to add?
No, I mean, we really just made the shift to the standards-based instructional model. And we really drove down into unpacking those standards and finding our learning targets and our success criteria, really defining that in our instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes.
I actually, I just asked a quick follow-up question on that. Do you feel that that has enhanced the education that you're able to offer? Or has it been difficult to have to re-jigger everything based on standards?
I think part of the jump was very difficult, but once it was made, it definitely enhances the education of the students and my job.
Okay, next up will be Mr. Curly from the middle school.
How are we doing, everybody? So now, if we jump to the middle school, the one thing that you'll see that sticks out is only 21% partially meeting targets. Now, when I went through, when we first got the accountability, when things go to the public, you could ask Ms. Howard, I basically almost had myself a little bit of a heart attack in the evening. But to be honest, over time, I realized and dived into all of the reports to kind of figure out how this came about. And now, first off, the new accountability, the new accountability system, we weren't told as a school or a district and state until late spring. So I went to a training on this to try to understand how the new system is going to work. The one thing that you'll see here is that achievements, zero out of four, not what we want to see. Our growth in ELA and math, two out of four. So basically, we made some progress, but we didn't meet the targets that we're looking for. EL progress, there's nothing there. We didn't fit the criteria of having enough students to qualify in that criteria. Chronic absenteeism. Now, in a nutshell, if I could sum up whether the positives or the negatives, the easiest way is this. For chronic absenteeism, even though it's only 10%, I'm a strong believer that if students attend school, the better off they're going to be. The one thing we realized during this process is that we were coding students incorrectly at the middle school. In terms of, for example, we had a high amount of students who were, who missed school because of hospitalization, whether they went to apашa programs, and we were coding them incorrectly. So we have quite a few students who were getting their educational services at other facilities. So if we, honestly, if we knew ahead of time, I strongly feel we would have got two or three out of those points, to be perfectly honest. Now, that is only 10% of the calculation. When I look at the ELA math and science achievement and go through the, you know, individual teacher reports, our school reports, I found out that our schools scored much better than what this indicates. The reason being is we had a very strong, what I feel, a 2017 school year, so our targets were set extremely high. If we look at our achievements, for both, for one of the grades, we stepped slightly below. For grades six and seven, we actually achieved higher. So now, with this new accountability system, understanding it, we know who our lowest-performing students are. We know who we can identify in terms of providing the proper interventions. And also pushing all the kids in ELA, math and science. And as I slide over to the next slide. If you can scroll down a little bit to the right. So to me, when the state says we only made 21% towards our targets, I like to look at this number right here, the achievement percentiles. Now, all these achievement percentiles, there's nothing that's in the 20s and 30%. All of our percentages are 40 or higher. Now, in my eyes, with my goal is that we should always be 50% or above, which is kind of like the state average. Last year, if we look at these achievement percentiles, where this group in sixth grade, when they were fifth graders, they achieved 41%, 58% in mathematics in seventh grade. These were pretty much identically the same percentage as maybe 1% higher. Eighth grade is the only grade in which we took a dip in our achievement percentiles, how we compare versus the state. Now, there's another way to look at it. In my eyes, I'm always been a big believer of the average SGP. Where, sixth graders, our SGP was 49 and 52 for ELA and mathematics. For grade seven and grade, excuse me, grade seven ELA and mathematics, 51, 51.3. So to me, anytime your SGP is between 40 and 60, obviously the higher the better. You're having moderate to high growth. Eighth grade, 37.5, 43.8%. Those are areas where we definitely struggled in. So, once you get this information, you can't change the past. So as a school, we sat down and summed up with administration, district leadership, and our teachers about looking at the individual standards. Where do we do well? Where do we struggle? How can we improve? And I could speak for ELA, math and science in particular, that we do have plans in place. Where we want to look at, and again, everything is based on standards, is how can we improve? So, if we jump to, Mr. Curly, go back to the PowerPoint, please. Go to the next slide, we'll jump back if you don't mind. So here, we have very rigorous goals for our students here with the middle school. Our student learning goal for all ELA math, science teachers, whether it's special ed or regular ed, 80% of the students will score 80% above on either unit assessments or reteaching assessments in those three areas. It's very, I think the basic challenge in education for teachers is, one, getting through the curriculum any amount of time you need to before standardized testing. So that gives you maybe 32, maybe 34 weeks depending on the subject area. You give up any type of assessment, you have to move on. You have to get through the curriculum, or you're always going to have a percentage of kids that don't understand the material. So it's a challenge to teachers that, how do you move on but still reteach? So in these three areas, you know, we're pushing the teachers to the max, to be perfectly honest, about how we can still bring, how can we get these kids up to that 8%? How can we make them to be proficient? So now, our goal is, each subject area is probably right around the point, give or take a week or two, of having their first unit assessment, where we're going to look to see who's meeting these expectations and who's not. And then creating a plan that if you're not, if you're not proficient or 80% on a particular unit assessment, how can we get there? Professional practice school, school-wide, the math, science, ELA departments will develop and administer X amount, again, depending on how many units for their grade and for the subject area, will develop these assessments and analyze the data for future instruction. MCAS is a great tool for looking at a big picture for one year. But again, that's last year's data. I can't personally, as a school, can't dwell on the results that I wish was better. We can only focus on what we can do from this point on. So, for administration, we're getting in the classrooms to try and provide feedback to our teachers. Our departments are meeting on a regular basis to review these unit assessments, to see what we can do to improve. And to be honest, because the way the accountability was set up, we were set our targets because of one year of information. If you flip-flopped our 2017 and 2018 data, we would have met our targets by at least 50%. So, in my eyes, am I happy with 21%? Certainly not. So we're going to work our tails off to what we can do to improve that. Now, a couple of things to separate the two years, 17 and 18. 2017, we had eight teachers in grade seven and eight, where we had, each team had a math, a science, an ELA, and a social studies teacher in grade seven and eight. Due to cuts, we lost a seventh grade and an eighth grade social studies teacher. So we were asking six teachers, two math, two science, and two ELA, to teach social studies, something that's outside of their comfort zone. So, no matter what you do for a living, in my eyes, if you ask somebody to do something, or a teacher to teach a subject, and take them out of the area where they should be focusing on, there is going to be, in my eyes, a decrease. So to ask those six teachers to plan, when most middle schools at the seventh, eighth grade level have people teaching all of these subjects, it makes a difference. All six, because I, we have the ability to look at each teacher and all their classes and look at their data. All six teachers, their growth in MCAS dropped from the year before. The six, the other teachers that did not, or the teachers that got to teach their core area, for the most part, their growth stayed approximately the same, and a lot of them scored higher. So moving forward is that, you know, my goal is to keep advocating that in grade seven and eight, we have eight teachers across the board where our staff can focus on their core areas. Because if we want them to do this type of work, and it is rigorous, is the focus is to be on teaching that one subject area, so they can really put a plan in place for those kids that are struggling. And before I wrap up, you know, even though the accountability was not strong, I am still proud of, you know, the efforts of our staff, especially those who had to teach social studies. And there were some highlights. Our students with disabilities are making growth in ELA mathematics in two out of three grade levels. Our inclusion model, our students that need this specified instruction in this type of model did make growth. Our guided math model, and again, this model is very difficult at the middle school level. Teachers are working hard. We have some new math teachers that, who have some experience, that are adapting to this model and is pushing them to like they've never been pushed before. Our ELs and form ELs are making, are making growth in ELA and math. Our high-need students are making great gains in science, that was one of the biggest takeaways. So here's the area of focus, besides our school-wide goals. We have to use this data during the course of the year if we want to improve. MCAS will tell you a big picture in terms of what's the energy of struggling. From year to, from year to year, you'll see different, you'll see some things that correlate, some things that don't. But, we need to use our own internal data if we want to improve. Creating a common approach for science open response writing. We got our science information met with our lead teacher, and we reached out to Dr. Murphy at the Cummings School, who's an expert in the sciences, especially in middle school. We reached out and came to the conclusion that our kids scored just as well as everybody else on the science MCAS. The area we struggled was open response writing. Now, that's a key part of it, that's something that's a focus for our science department. ELA, focusing on objectives, standards, standard-based instruction, and raising the rigor. Our Ms. Franzese, her strength is ELA. She's pushing our ELA teachers to be better, to look at, to lift different perspectives, looking more at the standards. Coding for absenteeism. Now we know that if there are students who do go out and they get educational services, that's something that we can easily improve. But also at the middle school level, in 2018 versus 2017, we had a minimum where it was at least 12 to 13 students that had to go out to hospitals, apашa programs because of mental health issues. In 2017, we maybe had three or four. So those are challenges we face, that in addition to just the grades, the MCAS, we were able to provide more support this year at the middle school program. A therapeutic, a therapeutic program is growing. We added a special ed teacher, a part-time counselor to work with it. So, MCAS-wise, we'll work hard to get better. But again, I do give credit to our staff, you know, who worked very, very hard, especially those who have to teach a subject area that's outside their comfort level. Any questions?
Sorry. Is homework individualized, in other words, for math as an example? I'm just thinking of how...
Sure, so one of the pushes particularly in math is having leveled work, whether it's in the classroom, in the homework. So for example, you know, most teachers, depending in class or outside of class, use ten marks, which unfortunately is distributed at the end of the year. Whereas teachers can assign personal work based on students' need. And in guided math model, you'll see when students move from station to station, they'll get leveled work to get what they need. There are times where, you know, the philosophy is, you know, everybody has to have the same type of assignments and work, depending on the standard. In my eyes, it's kind of like that hybrid version of, you know what, you have to, you know, in my eyes, the whole group lesson the first day, everybody gets the same type of work. And then you assess where the strengths and weaknesses are, and that's where you kind of figure out the different paths that you have to go.
And is there anything that you think that, or have you asked, or do parents offer to help and assist in any of these areas that might make a difference?
So the one thing is, as students get to middle school and at the high school level, the parental engagement starts to, I don't want to say take a drop, just because there's different, you know, responsibilities, and they do want to put more responsibilities on their child. But in terms of, I think parents have a tough time in these subject areas of, you know, working with their child because they've been so far removed, or especially in mathematics. Things are taught a little bit differently in terms of there's more modeling and then there is a straight computation, because the focus is you want to develop that deeper conceptual understanding. And it's, and it's hard, and when I worked at the Cummings School, parents have a difficult time particularly in math. At the middle school, you know, the parents do want to put more responsibility on their child, but I think it needs to be, you know, we have to find ways to increase parental engagement between school and home.
And I was wondering, I bet you there's a lot of men and women in Winthrop that know a lot about math. Maybe they could form a small committee and do wonders, not for their own child necessarily. Guess I know that might be more difficult than certainly.
And the one thing is, in the last few years, especially from working at the Cummings, going to the middle school, the middle school math scores as a whole have improved dramatically over, I would say, the, you know, going back to the, you know, transition time before that. So we're very proud of the work, but the work's not done. You know, the goal is for the students to keep growing as best as they can, so when they get to the ninth grade, we try to set them up to be as successful as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Curly.
Mr. Curly from the high school is up next.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Before I begin, I would like to thank Laurie Galvin for all the help that she's, and support she's given me in understanding the new accountability that the state has rolled out for us at the high school. And also, certainly, you know, the high school scores are a reflection of our entire district and, you know, the hard work that our staff and our teachers put in from K all the way up to the high school. So, to begin, I'd like to talk a little bit about our criterion reference component calculation here. here, and, and look directly at our student achievement in ELA, math, and science. So the difficult part for us at the high school level is our achievement targets are very high based off of our, our CPIs from last year. So in ELA, our achievement, we, we didn't earn any points, but our math achievement and science achievement, we, we made progress and certainly met our targets in science for all students. And as far as our low performing students, we saw a similar progress as far as meeting our targets and exceeding our targets for our math and science students. So overall, we made some achievement, some growth in achievement, but it, again, very difficult for us because our, our targets are set very high based off of our scores from last year. Next up, I'd like to, to talk about our student growth percentile, which is certainly something that over the last couple of years has been a very positive piece of the MCAS data that we've, we've liked to put out there, because our students typically in both math and ELA have shown significant growth over the last two years. We've earned, we've exceeded our target in both ELA and math, and made progress in both ELA and math for our lower performing students. Something to point out down here is we get more towards our four-year cohort graduation rate and our extended engagement rate. We, we did not meet our target and we actually showed some decline. And similar to what Mr. Curly had talked about, one of the issues we're finding at the high school is, is not necessarily that those zeros reflect what's really happening with our students, but more of a coding error on our side with how we're, how we're categorizing our students that are coming into the district and how we're reporting that to the state. So when we, when we talk about areas of focus, that's something I'll, I'll speak more to. One, one, one kind of major improvement we made in a target that we exceeded was on our chronic absenteeism, so we were able to reduce the amount of chronically absent students that we've had at the high school over the last year. And certainly exceeding our target with our advanced placement coursework and completion, which speaks to the percentage of our students that take AP courses at the high school, as well as the amount of students who score a B minus or above as a final grade in those classes. So all of that put together, we were, our criterion reference target percentage was fifty-two percent, which is partially meeting the targets. The, the state has set, you know, lofty targets for us based off of, you know, last year's data. And so I, I actually think that being over fifty percent is, is a real positive. I'd like to see it obviously be higher, but it shows that we are moving in the right direction. So you go up there, please. So this next slide I wanna show you, if you go down a little bit. And over just a little bit. I had spoke, I had spoke earlier about the student growth, and I just wanted to point out that our growth, student growth percentile in English Language Arts was sixty-two point six, and our student growth percentile in math was sixty-six point nine. And as Mr. Curly pointed out earlier today, anywhere growth, the, the state defines any growth between forty and sixty as, as strong growth, and anywhere over sixty percentile is considered very high growth. So again, similar to our last year's scores, we are continuing to show a lot of growth from our students from when they, when they take the MCAS in the eighth grade to what they score when they get to the tenth grade. Another thing that I just wanna point out is the amount of students here that you can see, the percentage of our students that are scoring proficient or higher on the ELA, math, and science. ELA and math are above eighty percent of our students are scoring proficient or higher, and in science, seventy-three percent of our students are scoring proficient or higher. So, and those are in every category just about right on the state average. But that's all, you know, to me, when you, when you're able to say that you have both the ninety percent of your students scoring in, in advanced or proficient or higher, I think is a, is a real bright spot for us. So areas of strength, we just talked about the growth being well above the state average, so that's something that, you know, again, we're very excited about. Another area of strength, and it's kind of a reason why I think we've, we've been able to make the growth, is that over the past two years, we've offered co-taught classes in the ninth, tenth grade level for both math, for math, science, and English classes. And to be able to offer that, that co-taught model and, and provide that level of instruction to our students, I think has been a contributing factor to our achievement and our growth. Things that we need to focus on, I spoke to you before about the dropout rate and the, and the, the extended engagement rate. And, you know, I, we were able to do a little bit of a forensic look into our, into our, into our practices to, to determine that, again, that's not a reflection of actual kids that are dropping out of school and more of some coding issues that we're having on the administrative side of things as we're reporting stuff to DESI. Similar to Mr. Curly, correctly coding students who are placed out on hospitalizations, our partial placements, as well as, you know, making sure that our students, when they come to Wyntup High School, if they transfer in or as they progress through our school, that they're placed in the right grade level as they move forward, which can be difficult as some students fail classes and take a step back and then skip grade levels if they make up credits over the summer. So that's definitely something that we have to work on, on our end and focus on. Like Mr. Curly said also, you know, the, you know, you have all this data from the MCAS, but the most important thing is what do you do with it? So it's so important for us to take this data and identify our students even before they come to Wyntup High School based off their eighth grade scores, to determine where they're struggling, and look at our students who are in the needs improvement and warning categories, and then provide them with some support, some support to, to move them forward. We'd like to do that next year through a, an MCAS boot camp type of course that we wanna offer during the school day as part of students' regular coursework. And that's an ongoing conversation that I'll be having with the superintendent and Laurie Galvin to discuss how we can put that in place. And then although this is also an area of strength, we wanna continue to make this an area of focus, is providing the co-taught classes for our students. To be able to provide students with instruction in a classroom where they have a content area specialist as well as someone from special ed who's, who has an expertise in designing instruction and delivering instruction is certainly been something that's worked for our students, but we wanna continue to move forward and provide them with professional development and kind of, and, and grow their, their, expand their tool box a little bit so that they can continue to support the, the students in those classes. So, that's it.
I'd just like to make a comment, but I'm glad to hear you say that you're addressing the needs of the students who didn't do as well, because that was one of my questions was what happens to those students? It's great that we can make improvements for overall going forward, so it sounds like that's well covered. And then budget-wise, on the co-taught classes, is that a hire, or is that, is there budget concerns with that?
So, yes. So are there budget concerns with that? Yes. If we wanna continue to offer co-taughts at the ninth and tenth grade levels, I think that, you know, we, we have to talk about addition of staff going forward. In the last year, it's, it's worked out for us, I think, just because of the way our, the staffing that we've had and the amount of kids that we were servicing in the, in the co-taught model. But we offer co-taught classes at those levels, but it's not for everyone. And it doesn't necessarily need to be for everyone, but there's still a group of kids that aren't being exposed to that, that probably, that probably should be. So it's really hitting some of our highest needs, our high-need students, but there's some other students at the college prep level that I'm, that I think could really benefit from that model that aren't getting it, and that is strictly based on budget and adding additional staff.
And another takeaway on co-teaching is the sustainability of the model. If you put it in ninth grade and you have the support in the classroom necessary to meet the needs of all students, and oftentimes the special ed teacher really being focused on process is picking up on students who are not identified as specials ed students, students who are identified as maybe ELL students or just a typically developing student who didn't get a concept, and the co-teacher in the classroom who understands the process can turn the teaching just a little bit to enable that particular student to flow through the rest of the class. However, if you provide a co-teaching model in grade nine, and then you're unable to provide it in grade ten, we can do well, and then we slide back. And, and the biggest takeaway within the co-teaching model is the confidence that it builds in students to be able, in a classroom, to have another adult, perhaps a process teacher or, or the content teacher, ask that question that that child would've never otherwise asked, especially in high school, because they're embarrassed to come forward and raise their hand and say, hey, I didn't get that, or can you slow down, or can you repeat that? The idea of the co-teaching model is that continuous learning and the methodology of revolving around the classroom and having eyes and ears on everything, so that you're able to, to change the outcome at the end of, of a class period. If you can't run it the following year, that, that's an issue. And it does, it is an increase in, in staff, because you have two teachers teaching one class. And if you don't understand what the co-teacher, what co-teaching really is, people will say, well, why do you have to have two teachers in one classroom? The outcomes speak for themselves in terms of being able to keep kids moving forward, and then taking pockets of kids very similar to an RTI model, and if there is a pocket of kids who didn't get a concept, you can break off into two teaching groups and reteach a concept while the rest, while other teaching is continuing or a different aspect of that classroom is happening. So it's a very data-driven, proven model of instruction across the entire country, every place that does it, and any, any research you do on the co-teaching model, if it's done with fidelity, the outcomes are, are excellent.
And that's at the ninth and tenth grade level, but then you don't necessarily need that in the eleventh and twelfth?
It's, it's more important to have it at the ninth and tenth grade level, no doubt.
Okay. And then I have a somewhat related question, going back to Mr. Curly. With the, the teachers that you mentioned, in the, the number of teachers focused on a particular area, you said you went from eight to six?
So we went, so there were six teachers. So in seventh and eighth grade, two thousand seventeen, we had eight core teachers. It dropped down to seven.
Down to seven, in each grade level. So if you had one additional teacher in each of those grades, you feel that those students would be in a better position?
Oh, you know, they, so obviously, you know, you hope the scores would improve, and I think that they would, but it more comes down to the teachers can focus on their content area, especially when it's, you know, their, you know, their main focus is to standardize the area, just how it is these days. So if you're a math teacher, you don't have to prep for an eighth grade civics course, or in seventh grade, prepping for geography. So when you prep for something that is not your comfort level, you have to spend a lot amount of time just to get ready, and, you know, it's just the nature of it that takes away from something where you love to say, hey, you know, focus more on your core area, but then the speech, if a social studies or history class, should be getting someone who's an expert. Because there are conversations that come up that are, that teachers, if you're not expert or not licensed, they're tough conversations to have in grade seven and eight, especially now that eighth grade has civics, especially with, you know, politics currently, so that, you know, and if I was, if I was a parent in, in the school system, I would want my child to have a certified social studies teacher.
Okay. And is that affected at all by the class size?
Class size, to be honest, class size is dictate basically to have seven core teachers. But if you look at any of the, probably, you know, middle schools that there are excelling, it's they have people that are certified to teach those areas. It just comes down to that the numbers dictates, you know, for the most part, seven homers. But for two thousand seventeen, we had the luxury of having everybody teach their core areas in grade seven and eight. I think it made a world of difference.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question. I know that, that MCAS doesn't require us to talk about the kids that are taking AP courses and what their scores are, but I would like as a school committee member just to hear, of those students taking AP courses, how many of them scored three and above in the end? Because I, you know, I mean, I, I don't understand why they wouldn't use that measure also. I know they only use the measure of how many people take. This is a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Here are no further questions that, do you have any?
I just wanted to, the last couple slides, the ones that I want to tell you about, just for one thing. So this year, this was the piece that I just mentioned, that they've broken down to meeting targets, partially meeting targets, or school requiring assistance or intervention. Next year, they will be, there'll be three different categories, which will be, this area over here will become not meeting. So for the first year, they set fifty percent as a baseline for everyone, and so it was broken down, basically you were in this area where you were meeting, or you were requiring assistance. And next year, there will be three, and there will be a not meeting category. So that will be one change. And these are just the same things I mentioned before, and a reminder that not trying to try to compare anything because it won't work out in your favor. But, and to ask questions, because it is a very convoluted system, and the formulas behind what, how they chose things and how they weighted things, I think is, is still giving agitator to a lot of people in the state. But, so it's a lot of practice in looking at the numbers and have been kind of digging down deep, like all the principals said, the amount of work that they did, really, you know, digging down, looking at the reports on the DESI headroom system and determining what it is that they can do going forward was a lot of work on that part, and they did a great job. I thank them for the dedication.
So I, I think too, when you talk about MCAS, it becomes such a hyper-focus, you know, for school districts, and, and to me, it's important to understand that, you know, while assessments such as MCAS provide an important piece of information about a student's progress, it's only one element, in my opinion. It's only one element, and there are lots of other elements that go into our students. As a school system, it, it's one aspect. I, I think that we are equally committed to the arts, we're equally committed to athletics, we're equally committed to community service, and, and the social, emotional well-being of our students. So oftentimes, when you do an MCAS presentation, people wanna focus in on area of need, area of need. If we were perfect, we would have no area of need, and we probably wouldn't need to be here anymore. There's always an area of need, there's always a place to, to do a little bit better. I think it's important to know that, that our staff has been at this, and at this data collection and data review with other things, other data that we're looking at, not just the MCAS. And, and we're using the MCAS results as well as all the other data points that the staff talked about in the testing that we do for all of our students throughout the year as a strategy for examining the impact of the programs that we currently have and thinking about what we're gonna do when we move forward. I, I applaud not only this group, but the teachers in learning this accountability status. There are many of us who have done this for a long time, and we are on the struggle bus of understanding how folks came up with this accountability rating system. And again, it's, it's, this is our benchmark for right now. Our hope is that with all the data review and all the input from superintendents, curriculum directors, and principals across the Commonwealth, the state will, will assist us in having a better understanding. Some of the things that were clear was they put some rules in this game that they didn't tell us they were putting in the game. And just one example, our students who are eighteen to twenty-two years old, if, I don't know, a year ago, they told us not to categorize those students as students who are seniors or twelfth grade, and to create another category in your accounting system, to say that those students had already completed four years of high school, our accountability status in that area wouldn't have been a zero, because we would've fixed that. Those are some of the things when they sent that survey out today to superintendents to say, what about this accountability status thing did you struggle with? Information sharing prior to giving us accountability status would've been a little bit helpful, so we, we put that in there. So I'm very proud of the, the progress that Wyntup Public Schools is making, and that the focus of looking at our children as individuals and moving them forward according to themselves, which the end result will be us continuing to be a very strong school district, and, and wanting people, people wanting to move here. I can tell you as the residential person over the past, some other people might have a different name for that, but I am the person who's been overseeing residents, we have a lot of people moving here. Yes, we have nice schools. We also have great teaching staff and a tight-knit school system that's doing well, so thank you guys for the presentation.
All right. Moving on with the meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October fifteenth meeting? It's moved by President Vecchia, seconded by Mrs. Swope. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. We do have some financial and business proceedings this evening. Motion to approve warrant SVW nineteen dash seven, amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand eighty dollars and ninety-four cents. Motion by President Vecchia, seconded by Mr. Martucci. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We do have a payroll warrant SPW nineteen dash five, the amount of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. So the motion to approve by President Vecchia, seconded by Mrs. Swope. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
One abstention. And we do have a, oh, two abstentions. And we do have a, the motion is approved. And we do have a budget transfer in the amount of $11,181.25.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President Vecchia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And the ayes have it. The motion is approved. And we do have a generous donation of $1,500 from the Viking Pride Foundation for after-school band program. I'd like to make a motion to approve that, accept that donation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by President Vecchia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd like to thank Viking Pride.
We, I've had a lot of conversation with our band parents. Again, we talk about paying attention to students in all areas, not just how well they do on the MCAS, but how well they do on the fields and in the arts and in music and drama, and, and their service to the community. So when things get tight, Viking Pride is always there. The band parents met with me, we talked about Viking Pride's mission, which is co-curricular activities. Oftentimes, folks think about Viking Pride as purely athletics. And once again, Viking Pride has stepped up to show that they are a supporter of the Winter Public Schools and co-curricular activities, including band and the arts. So they have generously donated some money to us, so that we are able to run an after-school program for our students here at the high school. And we're going to involve some middle school students to do practicing for their band as a group, so that they can continue to put on some performances. So I thank the Viking Pride folks that are here. I believe we have Ms. Peg Bailey, we have the voice of the Vikings, and we have Vasili, AKA Noah Field Management System, over to my right. So thank you, guys. I don't think I missed anybody. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Ms. Haynes, if there's any, you know, I think we should maybe write the Viking, Viking Pride, thank you, whether, for the donation. We do have a few buildings and grounds requests this evening. Boston Taekwondo would like to have a belt ceremony. Winter School of Performing Arts would like to have a dance recital. And the Winter Lodge of Elks would have their annual hoop shoot. The Elks also requested waiving the rental fee. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to approve the building and grounds request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by President Vecchia. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yep. You've got to go back. I mean, we need to accept that donation.
I think we did.
Did we?
Ms. Haynes, did we accept the, the vote?
Did we? There was a, a motion and a second.
To accept.
All right, so, all right, so I'll call a vote on the original motion to accept the donation of $5,000 from Viking Pride. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right, back to the motion, it's a long evening, I'm sorry. Back to the motion for the buildings and grounds request made by Mr. Matucci and seconded by President Vecchia. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. I do not believe we have any subcommittee reports. Ms. Howard, any personnel reports?
The only personnel report, no appointments or resignations or retirements at this time. We do have postings for substitute kitchen workers at all schools, and an ESP, which is an educational support person, or an aide, more than one for the William P. Gorman, and a leave of absence. Two of our teachers are taking leave of maternity leave, and so they will remain nameless, however they are on the agenda.
Under new business, there will be a superintendent evaluation subcommittee meeting next week, which is Mr. Matucci and I. We're just trying to set aside a, a date to have that meeting done. Last week, we made a motion to waive the first reading of the technology acceptable use policy. Ms. Powell, could you update with us with that, or?
Basically, we want to waive the second reading, so we can get this in, into place. Tonight's the first reading.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Yes, tonight, we'd like to waive the first reading.
So there's a motion by Ms. Powell, I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. At the last meeting, I made a resolution in favor of reaffirming the Winter Public Schools and Massachusetts nondiscrimination laws prohibiting discrimination in places of public accommodation on the basis of gender identity and gender expression. That motion was tabled until this meeting, so I would like to make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Do we have a second by Mrs. Swope? Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Parent?
I intend to vote for the motion. I think to do otherwise would, it would send the wrong message as to what we as school districts support, as far as equality and inclusion. But I do want to recognize that the legislature needs to revisit this, to look at the ambiguities. If it made it this far onto the ballot, there's enough ballot concerns that they should, you know, revisit this, not to take away rights, but to clarify.
Any further comments? Mrs. Swope?
I, I've spent some time on this, and I, I definitely think, I'm hoping that we all can vote yes on this. And there are about three reasons. First of all, as I remember, in the globe we entered, Massachusetts and 17 other states, including Washington DC, enacted protections for transgender individuals in any space, such as restaurants, or libraries, or bathrooms, that serve the general public. And for those who want to vote no to three, the research doesn't support their concerns. There's been no increase in crimes in bathrooms in cities that have adopted transgender policies, and those who have not. If crimes committed, there, there's nothing in this law that would shield predators. And two, I, in Winter, we, we as parents, so many people are caring and compassionate. And unfortunately, in this country, we've witnessed in the past three weeks an uptick in violence, racial, religious, political. What only our schools know too well is that we work so diligently every day to make this place a, a place that supports every single child, regardless of race, and it's a religious or gender identity. And I think it's so important right now that we take a position and accepting, this is an accepting community. And certainly, after all the teachers and administrators have gone through, to make sure that we create an atmosphere of respect for individuals, the school committee as a whole should support the separate in voting yes. And finally, on a personal note, prejudgment, or prejudice, I believe, keeps us, or at least keeps me, from being all I can be. And perhaps my training in special education, or the hours I've spent in human resource training, has opened my views to opportunities that ensure that those under my watch, now grandchildren, but hundreds of staff in the past, have a view of the world that's inclusive and caring and empathetic and optimistic. And so I'd like to make sure that we accept each other's stories, realize that we are richer in character, if we can try to understand life lived differently than our own, and hopefully, understand that we might really believe more in ourselves if we can understand others that are born differently. Yes.
All right. Any further discussion, Ms. Powell?
Um, yeah, I would just like to add that I think that this is an important vote in support of our students. It sends a message to them that we accept them, and that we provide an environment for them to explore and go through their changes. I know that we've had a number of students who've had questions about themselves and where they're going, and that it means a lot to them to have the adults in their lives, which would be us, as well as the peers in their lives, be accepting and allow them to become who they need to become.
I'll just reiterate basically what I said last time. I think since the last few years, most local boards and school committees have taken the activist approach. This same resolution is passed in various districts throughout the state. It's also endorsed by the Mass Association of School Committees, MTA, BTU, AFT, Republicans and Democrats, you know, our whole congressional delegation, and Governor Baker. And I think it's the right thing to do, so that's why I'm in favor of it. So any further discussion?
Who have a question?
Just a motion to approve the resolution, which was read at the last meeting. And it was seconded by Mrs. Swope. Hearing none? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
And one abstention, and the ayes have it. All right. Moving on to unfinished business. There was a payment agreement, an agreement in here regarding the solar panels, but I do know that there is a meeting tomorrow with, with the town manager regarding this issue. So in the interest of that, I would like to make a motion to table this discussion until the next meeting. Seconded by Mr. Matucci, do we have any discussion on the motion? Yes.
I know we got a memorandum, which was one paragraph, but I, I never got what I asked for, which was feedback from the law office, what their concerns were. It's the only thing I, I didn't get.
Okay.
I mean, I got the same agreement, but I just wanted to see what their concerns were, if they were.
So that was, I, I did ask.
No, no, I, I know you asked, I just didn't get it.
But they, my guess is that there wasn't anything formalized, but I can go check that for you, to make sure.
So I, I could mention that.
Frank, so we can answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Nady?
So we had provided the original comments back from, from the original PPI, from the, from our blog. So that was provided, I believe it was probably a month or two ago now, at this point. So, yeah, so their original comments were included after the last meeting that I was at. We, the current PPA that we have here, had took a look at that, went back through those comments, revisited those comments from our attorneys, and SOLEC was, did work extensively with us to get many of those comments and, and address those issues. So that was something that we worked off of KP's original document, and then myself, David Krestman, and Austin, the new town manager, all came together, worked through that directly with SOLEC, based on their original document. And they accepted it. At this stage, we feel as, as much as they're willing to accept with the contract. So I believe we've taken it as far as we could without, without the PPA not being able to...
Absolutely. I'm in favor of it. I'm ready to vote on it now. To be honest, I was ready to vote for it at the last meeting. I'm 110% in support. But I think some of my members would feel more comfortable meeting the town manager. It's just unfortunate that meeting's tomorrow. So I think that's why.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, President Vecchia.
I would, I would ask that my illustrious partner here get answers to his questions for the next meeting. I'd like to see us vote on this thing. I think it's very, very important. He has some technical questions, some legal questions that need to be answered. So I hope that can be done within the next week, week and a half, so we can vote on this. I'm going to try to make the meeting tomorrow with our new town manager, with Mr. Matucci. Maybe some of those questions can be answered.
Well, if you were, I'm sorry. Would, if, if you are, if those questions are answered in the affirmative, could, could we possibly vote to move this forward if, on the basis of whether those questions are answered? Is that a possibility?
Tonight?
Yeah, I don't.
No, I have some wording in the, in section F of the lease that I think needs to be changed.
Okay.
So.
I have a question on the, the timing of this. Is the expectation that this work would begin during the school year? Because my understanding from the last meeting was that it would not, but based on Mr. Matucci's questions, it seemed like there's an indication it would.
So at this point, the solar company would want to begin construction as quickly as possible. That is contingent on getting approvals back from the utilities, which generally, National Grid has been a little bit faster than ever sourced in that department. So you're looking at probably like two or three months out. So they would be looking to begin installation probably during the winter at some point, so that the system would be installed in full, to take full advantage of the summer and the majority of the generation, the generator period. This company has done numerous installations while school has been in session. It's likely the case that Chelsea, who I formerly also shared time with, as the energy manager alongside Luther, but likely also be doing an installation during the school year, so while the students are present. So it's their process generally, the, the period of construction that is going to be the most disturbing of the site is bringing the materials on site and graining them up. And that's generally something they would do during second shift on the weekend when there isn't anybody around. The installation is generally, I believe, the person who saw the last time said, you know, there is some, some noise associated with it, but it's not the, the most disturbing part of the installation.
Okay. I think before, I would want to vote on this, I would want to have assurances that, that agreements have been made with the administration and, of the building, as well as with Superintendent Howard, that that would not, that their address, that their concerns about the disruption to the school day have been addressed, before I would want to see anything going on.
Absolutely. All right. So we have a motion on the table, and it's seconded to table this discussion till the next meeting, after the meeting tomorrow with the town manager. So all in favor of that motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? The ayes have it. All right. Public comment, Mr. Liederman. Did you have anything to say?
Can I address the committee?
Sure.
Sit there a whole time. Okay, thanks for that, Bill.
Sure.
No.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Captain, being a part. I'm the chairman of the Winter High School Hall of Fame. We had a very successful event on the 20th of October. We had 250 attendees. And I want to praise three individuals who made this night possible. First, the superintendent of schools, her, her help in guiding this was very fast. And I want to praise her, because the job that she has done during the past year, and her dedication to athletics, is a blessing. She's attended every football game, and it's great to see a superintendent of schools that cares about athletics. So I want to thank you, Ms. Howard. And I want to thank Mr. Conley. His help during the past couple of months has been phenomenal, okay? She's been very cooperative. And Brian Curly, we held it in the cafeteria, and it was an amazing success because of Mr. Conley and Mr. Curly. And I've been chairman of the Hall of Fame Committee since 2005. I was appointed in 1998 to be inducted into the High School Hall of Fame. We have, as you see, I passed up the program with my help from Hank Leely, who's been a member of the committee since 1997. We have 175 inductees. We have the, Hall of Fame will be every two years, okay? And it's been an extremely big success. And more important than that, also, during the 2014, 2016 Hall of Fame induction, the superintendent of schools never attended and never helped us once, okay?
Jim, thank, thank you, Jim. I just want to take an opportunity to thank you so much for all you've done with the town and the Hall of Fame Committee, along with Ms. Bailey, yourself, Mr. Conley, Mr. Milano, Mr. Igor, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Domenico, Mr. Tebow, Mr. Dunbar, Mr. Ciotis. And I also want to congratulate the inductees. Personal friend of mine, Kristen Finn, was inducted. The 1984 softball team, Ms. Howard was a member of, and my classmates, 2006 Super Bowl championship team. And you did a great job, as always, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Public relations. Mr. Matucci?
Good.
Mr. President Vecchia?
Good.
Mr. Parent?
That's great.
Ms. Swope?
Okay. So we have the annual county country fair for the junior class. And being the mom of a junior class, I'm going to encourage all three people to come out. That is November 8th, from 6:00 to 10:00. Doors open at 5:00. It's always a fun event. Also, Chicago is going to be performed November 15th, 16th, and 17th. Tickets are on sale now. And there will be a speakeasy on Saturday night fundraiser for the Drama Club at the golf course. Then tickets are also available now. And then I also want to encourage people to, if you want to know what's going on in the high school, at 7:55 AM on Friday mornings, Mr. Donnelly's digital media class does a live broadcast with news about and updates about the high school. So tune into WCAT for that.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Matucci, seconded by Mrs. Swope. All in favor?
Aye.